Okay, I'm gonna call this meeting to order, this joint special meeting of the Ector County Commissioners Court and the Odessa City Council. It is currently 1:31 PM. If you would rise and join us, we're gonna have a prayer from Commissioner Simmons and the pledges by Commissioner, by Councilman Byrne.
I just pray, gracious heavenly Father, we just thank you for this day. Father, thank you for the beautiful weather we're experiencing right now. Father, we wish great for rain in this region. We pray that you'll send that to us. Father, as we conduct discussions today about the future of Ector County and Odessa, Father, we just pray for your guidance and your wisdom, and most importantly, your peace as we discuss things. And we ask that all that we do be representative of our constituents that we represent, as well as be glorified unto your name. We ask, call these things in Christ's name. Amen.
Would you join me in the pledge? Our pledge is to the God of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On the day of the trial, our pledge is to be fair, honest, one day under God, one and indivisible.
Okay, we're gonna go ahead and get started, and I'm going to read the county's agenda item, which will take a while since I drafted it. Being an attorney that I am, I can't change my spots. Okay. Number one, to review, consider, and discuss all matters and issues related to the potential construction of a new Ector County courthouse to replace the current courthouse, including a thorough discussion of how the city of Odessa and Ector County might collaborate, cooperate, and coordinate together to facilitate said construction, addressing various issues bearing on the courthouse construction project and the potential city-county collaboration, including the acquisition and/or development of parking sufficient to meet the needs of the general public and employees, the negotiation and consummation in terms of a potential interlocal real estate agreement whereby Ector County would trade ownership and/or use of its current courthouse block for the block presently housing the Odessa American and any other real estate transactions related in any way to the courthouse project, including additional land acquisitions, the demolition of the current courthouse and the Odessa American and debris removal, and the cost and allocation of cost of same between the city and county, the abatement and remediation of the Odessa American and the current courthouse structure and the cost and allocation of cost of same between the city and county, the providing of certain incentives by the city to the county to lower the all-in cost of the construction project to the county, given the county's financial condition and challenges, the county's general financial challenges and conditions, and the various mechanisms for financing and paying for the courthouse construction project, including bonds and certificates of obligation, and the laws, including electoral laws surrounding them, the possibility of a joint-purpose courthouse and municipal building with city offices to be located with county offices in the same building, and the pros and cons of such a joint-purpose building, including a discussion of potential efficiencies, concerns, potential share costs, potential revenue-sharing sources, challenges, potential liabilities, and all other issues associated with a joint-purpose building, the value and importance of a new courthouse to the economic development and revitalization of downtown Odessa, as well as the value and importance of a new courthouse to Odessa and Odessans generally, as well as to ensure compliance with the Constitution, the formation and composition of a courthouse committee, the deficiencies of the current courthouse and all issues related to those deficiencies, including building maintenance costs and issues affecting the nature and quality of the courthouse employees' current work environment, the timeline and timeframe for construction of the courthouse, including the means and timing and staging of transitions and relocation of employees from the current courthouse to the new courthouse, projected construction costs and the potential for inflation over time, the scope and nature of the courthouse construction project itself, including office space and other requirements, the legislative climate and its potential effect on courthouse construction financing, as well as a discussion of other laws affecting the project and the time of its completion, the potential property tax effects of the courthouse construction project on the citizens of the city of Odessa and Ector County, any other issue pertaining in any way to the construction of a new Ector County courthouse and the cost, value, and scope of the courthouse construction project, and any other issue pertaining in any way to any issues set forth above. And I'm done with my agenda item one.
Okay, I'll go ahead and call the meetings of City Council to work in accordance with the Open Meeting Act, Chapter 551 of the Governmental Code of Texas. Notice is hereby given that all interested persons that the City Council of the City of Odessa, Texas, will have a joint meeting slash workshop with the Ector County Commissioners on Tuesday, April 10, 2018, at 1:30 in the Commissioners' courtroom, Suite 120 of the Ector County Administration Building Annex, 1010 East State Street, Odessa, for the following purposes: Item one, to consider the possibilities of cooperative efforts to possible new joint-use Ector County courthouse and city of Odessa municipal building and any relative, related requirements, and the material to consider scheduling of any additional joint meetings of the Odessa City Council and the Ector County Commissioners Court for follow-up discussions on the possibilities of a joint Ector County courthouse in city of Odessa municipal building. And I will turn the meeting over to Judge.
Okay, then, again, before we get to two, I'll raise my second agenda item. But I thought, well, the best way to do this at the start would be to go ahead and, now, I'm gonna give just a very brief introduction. And we'll kind of go around the table here and have kind of just a brief preamble or description of people's thoughts about what we might be doing here today. You know, I work at the courthouse, I see the challenges, and I've seen the challenges since day one. The working conditions of our employees there, in many instances, has been inhumane. You know, I myself have been in the situation where I've been placing the trashcan bucket so that I catch the leaking sewage flowing from the ceiling. And I know that many of us have that have been in the courthouse. To me, this is an opportunity, though, and the biggest responsibility we have is to the United States and Texas constitutions. Because the Constitution requires us, mandates us, as a county, to try cases in a courthouse that is safe to the public, that is also constructed in a way that we can do our jobs. And there are tremendous challenges that we face on a daily basis with even being able to do our jobs. The courthouse is not, as I think District Attorney Bobby Bland stated this much better than I could, he did this yesterday, we have some severe issues and challenges. It's not like the crime rate in Odessa, Texas, is falling, unfortunately. I wish it were. But it has spiked over the last several years. I think we've seen a tremendous upsurge in caseload facing the District Attorney's Office, serious cases. And yet, despite the incredible growth in population, which is also reflected in the growth of the criminal cases being filed and prosecuted in our courts, we have done nothing to take care of this problem. The reason that I'm here, I think the reason that we're all here, is that we recognize there is a problem. We also recognize that we have an obligation to the citizens of Odessa and the residents of Ector County to make sure that they have a safe community, one where these cases can be tried efficiently. And not just for them, but also not to forget the defendants who have the right to justice under the law and have the right to have their cases heard as well. Other people have and could speak better to this issue than I do. But my interest in doing this is so that we, if I can start a dialogue here, where we're working together cooperatively, we can come up with a solution that would provide a new courthouse, a better work environment, a safe work environment, and ensure, most of all, compliance with the Constitution. With that, I think I'll turn it over to the mayor, and then we'll just kind of.
Um, let me go ahead and introduce my council members, just for the record. Councilmember Malcolm Hamilton, Councilmember Billy Bryant, Councilmember Bart Graff, Councilmember Phil Burton Gonzalez. One thing I would like to ask is, y'all are kind of ahead of us in the process. Can we speak some details on the courthouse that is being proposed? Do you have anything, like a JSA can speak about or anything like that?
I don't know if we're far enough in the process to actually give you the exact detail, but he can give you a summary.
Yeah.
He says he acted his life too.
Is he sweating?
Craig, could people go to the podium and let's just kind of walk through this? And use this mic, he's going to dress.
So this is Cruz Castillo with JSA Architect.
Corbin Jackson, Cruz Castillo, JSA Architect. So, we know that the preliminary studies that were developed prior to the bond several years ago that passed was kind of a basis of where the A needs assessment was concluded and then began to forecast for, for the future. And obviously, the growth that was assumed back then is slowly coming to fruition, and the last several months, it's turned into hyper mode, right? And so, the, at the last time of, that a study was completed, total square footage of the courthouse was approximately around 180,000 square feet. Say 180,000 square feet, ranging in cost between 95 million and I think 110 million. I'm not saying that right, Commissioner. Somewhere in that range. Further study, depending on the type of building construction, the construction delivery model, and how efficient the building should be, those costs could be reduced by some margin, okay? And then in addition to that, looking at having a courthouse downtown, of course, is consideration for parking and that kind of thing. And the parking numbers range between 550 to 600 parking total, onsite and offside, if you will. So those are kind of numbers from, from the study report.
Was the parking included in the rest, the total bid, the parking on the 500, 600, that's part of that 95, 100?
Yes, yes, sir, yes, sir. Dedicated, there was onsite and then offside parking achieved.
Plus, there was some room for growth in that square foot.
Not really.
There was a garage.
Growth, yeah, but no garage. So at feet, at feet, parking, parking needed.
That wasn't, I mean, that wasn't a part of the.
Not certain.
Do you have any questions?
I do. Uh, Cruz, ten years ago was this, that you came up with a plan?
Well, there was, so, two studies were performed, one by a community group that just included a local architect, which was JSA. We came up with the findings, and then the county commissioned Brinkley Sargent a year after we completed our informal study, if you will, and the county had that. They could share in 2013, or I think 2013.
Hey, our, our TNC was growing tremendously, didn't it? So, my thoughts are, you would need to certainly increase that courthouse design, but it's because I'm afraid if you built it, it's what you have right there, it would be almost too small to grow in.
And actually, the 180,000 was with projected growth, but it's actually less than what we've grown to. So the 180,000 actually accounted for that growth. Our current courthouse square footage is about 138,000, so we're only able to use about 127,000. So we're looking at a substantial increase in square footage with the projects that we've thought about.
Yeah, there was plans for growth. I think 20,000 was just dedicated for the future, build out or finish out, if you will, in that 180,000 square foot number from back then.
How many floors that we've built?
Then, I believe the councilman was four, I believe, at that, at that time.
Thanks, Cruz, that's exactly, we just, we needed the numbers. I'll turn it back over to Judge.
Well, and, you know, just so we kind of maybe get to what we're discussing back out on the table and use it as kind of a parameter. What we're looking at doing by collaborating with the city, as we all know, the county is the least funded entity, so we're kind of cash-struck. But we're looking at a collaboration where we could shift some of the costs over to the city to make this work. That would include parking acquisitions, land acquisitions, demolition, abatement, and mediation costs associated with, you know, the Odessa American, the courthouse, the other portions of the block where Odessa American sits. You know, essentially, what we're wanting to do is, through a transaction that we would collaborate on, limit the county's cost to the cost of construction. And we feel confident, again, Cruz would have to verify this, but we feel confident that that construction of 180,000 square foot, square foot new courthouse could be achieved at a savings, if this were to happen. The savings coming from the cost of the land acquisitions, the cost avoidance of the remediation, abatement, demolition, cost avoidance of the land acquisitions, and, you know, we think all of that and the parking acquisitions. You know, the parking could be flexible, we're not asking for a Taj Mahal parking garage. I think we would be fine if we had the land acquired that we needed with surface parking strife. Of course, the base plans that we're still going by have other parking that is secured for judges and other things that would not be a part of the surface park. That's already been accounted for in the, in the base plan. So we're just talking about the additional general public and other employee parking. So how this came about with the involvement of the city and county is the downtown renovation, okay? It's a great idea, it's great for the community, it was just showing life and heart for our community. And so if I'm going to these downtown openings and the convention center and hotel and all, well, on your map, you've got a new courthouse. And so, after several of these meetings, I meet with the city manager and say, you know, hey, look, you know, we're looking to build a new courthouse, but that location's not our cheapest. So we've looked at purchasing other buildings downtown, we looked at purchasing a church, we have land available at the law enforcement center. I mean, so we're looking for, because our bond, it just failed right before I become a commissioner, and we have this, this study on a, on a new building from Brinkley Sargent. So we're, we're looking for a cheaper way to get this building built. And there is no person in here that doesn't agree that our courthouse is failing. Your structure is failing rapidly. So, the question of a need for a courthouse is already been answered. It's just how can we build it? How can we best suit the community? And so, with discussions with the city manager and the location on his plan for the downtown revitalization, the courthouse in its current area, it could be awesome. I mean, I think it would tie into the community very well. So, on this map, you'll see this courthouse, okay? And the city has purchased the Odessa American and everything but the building on the corner. And they told me it was four new courthouses. So, yeah, that makes sense. And so we have the apartment here and this parking right here. So when we first started talking about this, we were gonna build a parking garage here, courthouse here. City would take the existing courthouse and build it into a park, a city park, which would be in the, in the beginning of the new downtown project. Which is really great, I mean, I like this idea. Through further discussions, the cost of a parking garage is astronomical. So, we're looking at, at ground-level parking when we're gonna build the courthouse here, where the Odessa American is, and purchase this land for surface parking. We'll still have this, we can still meter, if you close this city street off here, and have, add that to it. That would still be tied into the city, development. And so that's kind of how started looking to the city, you know, to be a part of their plan and still get the courthouse built and be part of the downtown revitalization. When we break the courthouse to match the existing, or the new construction of the convention center, hotel, and just kind of book in this thing and hope it would grow together. That was kind of my thoughts when I started getting involved.
Did I say something there?
Sure.
Why not, why not do more with less? And what I mean by that is, of course, we're restricted downtown. And instead of us acquiring additional parcels and whatnot, why not, we just build upwards? I mean, think about it, when you think of a downtown, you always think high rises, tall buildings. And I believe we're due for about, what is it, 750,000 people here, area here, pretty soon? Was that not the projection or something I said?
Seventy-five.
How many?
You know, we've got, you know, the problem with trying to come up with a number on Odessa is.
It's jelling.
Yeah, it's just, it's jelling right now. You know, I know the school district actually did a projected study, and they did it on school numbers, just because that's, that's their business. And you know, I know Midland is talking about for the next 10 years, probably quarter million. And actually, Odessa, Ector County will be larger because of the, we have a city more or less attached to us. It's bigger than Andrews, bigger than Montana.
So, so my, my, my point, just getting back to that, I think we should develop for the future. I don't know if a hundred and fifty thousand is big enough. Why not? You know, refine how to cut off at the same time, you know, make this thing a pretty good size to where we don't have to come back and do something again during the next 10, 20 years.
What are we going around with?
That courthouse has been around, I know because I was a kid, I know that. Maybe when you were a kid. Well, I guess what I'm saying is, let's build for the long term. Why not, let's build for the long term instead of a, a quick fix, you know, let's get something, you know, down and constructed. Let's, you know, let's, let's.
Well, and that's a very good point, but it, as I alluded to earlier, we already had bond elections fail. And so we're trying to, not overbuild or underbuild, we're trying to hit a number that we can, we can sell.
Have you guys ever thought about a long-term lease buyback or anything like that?
Yeah, we've had all sorts of scenarios, but you know, it's, it is what it is. We still need.
If I remember right, the Brinkley Sargent proposal was four stories or three stories?
I think it was four.
I think it was four, but seeing what you build up.
How many?
I think it was four, it's been a while now that I've looked at.
Three and a basement.
Three and a basement, that's right. But then, you know, you could also build up. And my problem with building, overbuilding, is that, that you've got a great big building, that's a cost. And, and my biggest concern right now, until we do our budget in July and August, is we're gonna have to have maintenance and operations funding for a larger courthouse. And we're already expanding our jails, we're gonna have tiny jailers, so I'm very nervous about making any kind of decisions. And this is great, don't get me wrong, this needs to happen, this is a good thing, because we need to collaborate, obviously. And, but making, nailing down a number of square footages and all this stuff, you know, premature in my opinion, simply because we don't know if we're gonna afford the staff. So that's kind of where I'm coming from. I'm very nervous about our financial health. I hope we have good numbers come here, which next year was a disaster.
One suggestion I would make, and I, I agree with Malcolm. You don't, you could build more floors, you don't have to finish those floors out. And that would certainly be cheaper in the long run, and you would be assured of growth in your courthouse.
Why not, why not use a base, a fee-based parking? Everything.
Well, that has it.
Certainly, yeah, that's, that's an option as well. Just the way they designed the parking lot, I guess you could put the electronic mirrors in there and show us that.
You know, the thing that we're talking about is all one-sided now towards y'all.
Yeah.
The other thing about it is that, you know, the joint venture, in my mind, was pretty well brought up, because we're playing the same thing. We have aging buildings, we have efficiencies that I do not think are very good because we got over crowded floors, et cetera, et cetera. And so as a result of, I think there's an awful lot of savings. The main problem is, is we need a courthouse now. The other side of it is, though, is that we really need an opportunity to fill out what type of alternatives can we look at until we can get to that point and maybe have any answers for what the savings would be to the public for the efficiencies, as well as the other things that we could do jointly, but, you know, it takes time. And, you know, as you're, and again, those are the things that I don't have an answer for, and I know y'all don't either, but I wish that there was a way that, that we could find some alternatives. This is just not a problem of the county and the city. This is the problem for the people of Odessa. It's something that we all have got to jump on board and help come up with the right answers for the long range because there is such a, a different, a different number that we look at every day of who's moving in, et cetera, et cetera. And we have the responsibility to take care of that. No, no, some side of the responsibility part is, is that we really need some, some time to, to, as a joint group, to study where can we go. I mean, I don't think, just here's the land, go do it, is the answer. But I don't know what the answer is between now and when we can come up with the answer, if that makes sense.
One thing, you know, in the design of it, if you have in mind, for say, a joint-use building, for instance, you could look at making the plan such that you could do it in stages, take care of the county's emergency first, but with the idea understood from the beginning that we're, we're going to long-range plan for the city's needs as well. Kind of where the cooperation would come in there.
You know, we talked about the parking garage, and there's just not enough land in downtown Odessa not to have a parking garage. I mean, it's just, I, I don't see any other way we can do it, and they are expensive, as we're saying, but, you know, there again, we can, we can, I think it's a time to get outside the box, no question. See what, what avenues you can come up. I don't disagree with the judge, I think that might be the answer, as far as how you could probably get to a point. But the thing about it is, it's the time that's needed to really study to, to be able to provide those numbers.
Now, I'm just living with the larger, and I'm not speechless, I'm not stronger. As we know, we need a courthouse, but we never sit down with y'all or anything like that.
How soon, how soon can we get started? How do we get something?
Well, one of the things I want to talk about, just real quick, I'll come back to that, that is the timing for what we're doing. Because I think there are some factors here that are going to influence how long we can wait for this realistically. You know, I used to work in the oil and gas business, very familiar with concept of inflation and inflationary cycles that are tied to the boom cycles of the oil and gas industry. And prices today may not be the prices two months from now. Costs, you know, steel, other things. Costs of, you know, steel, other things may go up. And so that's one factor that you start worrying about, on how long you might wait to do this, is inflation. Because you might be facing a much higher price tag. Secondly, you gotta look at the legal climate that surrounds this situation. Several years ago, there was a law passed that says, um, if, for instance, you have a bond election for a courthouse or for any other big-ticket capital improvement item, um, and it fails, then you have to wait an additional three years before you can issue debt to build that courthouse. When you tack on construction time, then who knows the inflationary factor five years from now, let's hope it's still booming. But you could be pushing this thing down the line another five, six years. I don't think the citizens can afford that length of a wait. Um, the third thing I would wanna mention also is the legislative climate. You know, there is, uh, a movement afoot to reduce local options for financing, to put strict limits on that, out of concern for, uh, various reasons. But if we get a law next legislative session that says no more debt issuance or severe limits on that, we may lose, uh, the ability to do what we're even discussing. So there is a window of opportunity right now, which is almost like it, you know, it's ready to come down. And one shake in the foundation and that thing comes down quickly, and then you've got a locked, locked window where you cannot build. Uh, I don't know about y'all, but I was born and raised here and I'm trying to think in my life's history of any county bond initiative that was ever passed. And I only come up with one by memory, and that's the Coliseum. I can't remember any other bond initiative that's been voted on in this town ever passing. The only thing that I've ever seen get done is through debt issuance just about. That's how we built the first jail, that's how we expanded the jail most recently. And that's the very mechanism which may soon be unavailable to us, you know, at the local scene.
Very small. Uh, I personally know the problems of courthouse. Yes, you definitely need a new courthouse. Uh, we as citizens deserve a new courthouse. Uh, it, it's been times where it really wasn't this big. And Van Buren had been stood on that courthouse for years. Uh, needs to move forward, I think, and get a new courthouse. Uh, that's one reason why we bought the Odessa American building, was simply to be able to do a trade with the county. Uh, and I have two, I hate savings, but there could be a little hiccup there, because when you read the deed to the current location for the courthouse, uh, we're gonna have to have the city legal staff and some of the county legal staff to look at that and see how we can work around it. So that, that's a little hitch right there, a little hiccup. Uh, but I personally think it can be worked around. Uh, you're right about the bond election. Uh, we as elected officials are elected to make decisions to people and to do what's right. And, uh, I think where you're going is certificates of obligation, and I would say yes. I really think that you need to do certificates of obligation and, and get this done.
And just while we're there, can I just give an overview as to what certificates of obligation are? It's a form of debt financing, and just, just exactly what we did with the jail, where we do this in a very public fashion, we publish it in the newspaper, our intent to issue debt of a certain amount, to go for the construction of courthouse and improvements, parking, et cetera, whatever's required to bring this to fruition. It's presented to the public, the public has a period of time in which it can protest that. If it absolutely is upset with us for doing that, they can gather a petition, I think it's five percent of voters, I think it's qualified voters, uh, we'd have to, either it's qualified or registered. But there's a number there where if they get enough signatures, they can force a bond And again, if they don't get enough signatures, which we did not have a petition with the jail, then it's just voted through, if it's approved, the money's, the loan is closed, construction begins. And that's my favorite way of doing this, um, because it would get it done quickest. And because, I, I think we're past a minor irritation factor with the courthouse. We're more along the lines of an emergency. We're along the lines of, we could have an incident up there that could keep us from fulfilling our constitutional duties. And unfortunately, the duty remains regardless of our facilities. So it very well might be that Judge Trotter, um, is out trying a case under an oak tree like Judge Roy Dean did years ago. Uh, Judge Billingsley might be doing that. I might be doing that. You know, and I think there's all sorts of issues involved with that. We're not hiding the ball. I'm telling people forthrightly what the process is. If you don't like it, if you don't want it, you can come petition, you can force an election. Now, one thing I say again, if the election is forced and if it fails, then you lose the ability to issue debt, to issue the certificates of obligation for another three years after the failure. Which, when you add the construction time to that, you're probably looking at a delay of an additional five years, even assuming that, you know, six years, depending upon how long it would take your two bodies to come up to some agreement.
Oh, back with your bond election. Uh, a lot of people came and asked me questions about the courthouse. And they could not understand why the county commissioners, the county judges, were not out campaigning for the bond election. They didn't understand that for long you couldn't do that. Uh, I think we need to educate people about that too. Uh, and I would tell people, well, when I was there, we had to have the district clerk of the third floor take her files out because the floor was stucked. Uh, our county clerk, every night, has to put thick plastic over our books to keep law footage from messing them up. Uh, I can name various judges, like the park that's been ruined, all sorts of stuff. Uh, and people would say, well, that's easy, just fix the plumbing. No, it's not easy, because it, it's in the walls, the mirrors, you would literally just have to gut the courthouse to be able to fix all of that plumbing. So, that was probably called more than a new courthouse. But getting the facts out to people is something that y'all were not able to do with a past bond election. And, uh, I don't know, with the climate of people today, I would just say, see if it's possible, because you're responsible for that courthouse.
My hope this time is that we, unlike last time, we are able to show people a location. We're gonna be able to tell people where the courthouse is gonna be. Hopefully, we'll be able to tell them what it's gonna look like. And hopefully, we'll be able to tell them what a price tag is. And in comparison with the last price tag, hopefully, it would be, if we did this deal, less to the camera. There's still an open question, which I acknowledge, is it less to the taxpayer? City may be paying for some of this as well. But again, we're past the irritation, we're into the emergency stage. We haven't even talked about the economic development, and I think we're still kind of on the structural deficiency side of the current structure. We haven't heard from Armando, do you have some things you'd like to say, Armando?
Nothing.
We haven't heard from Councilmen and House, would you like to say something about, um, about this? We've kind of had a little preamble where everyone came and kinda spoke a little bit, I don't think you've had your shot.
I'm glad you said that. I, I, first of all, I wanna say, I'm, I have some concerns, but I'm, I'm more optimistic. I, I really like that we're meeting. I mean, this is a great start, this is how things get moving. If at the end of the day, we don't do anything today, we still need to go ahead and try and set up another meeting so we can move this forward, because even if we can't do it, I think we need to do proper steps in place where somebody else doesn't have a hard time like we are right now. Because as a city, we have concerns too, and we have some growth issues that we gotta deal with. Uh, and we have some current commitments that we have already tied up a lot of money to, and I'm afraid of that, if, if we're not careful with that money, we're gonna run out at the end of the day. Uh, but I think, you know, between all of us, if we can set up some timeline, I, I think if, if, uh, if I'm not mistaken, what you went to that one meeting and you asked for, uh, if, if that's something that we can go back to the drawing board and, and look at and say, okay, you wanted us to do a land swap, right? We demolished both buildings. Uh, I, I think there's, uh, if we can get all those specifics, you know, do bullet points, you wanna call it, say, if we can do this, we can do, or we can't do that, and then we know, and then we come back to you and say, and then, hey, if this is what we can do, what can you do? And then hopefully meet in the middle. But, uh, first of all, I, 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 I think that it's great that we're meeting. I mean, I, and I'm, I'm really proud that, uh, as a city, we're coming together to face this, because it's not just, yes, y'all, you know, y'all take care of it, but I have to go there to take care of business myself. So, um, I, I really appreciate, uh, the initiative that both the mayor and you are taking to, to do it. Thank you for that.
Thank you for, for being here and your, your comments and your, your insights. Um, Commissioner Simmons?
Yeah, um, I'll go back to the, the map up here. And I would hear when we did the first, the golf proposal, I don't know if I can see that. Um, and, and a little bit of clarification, this here is the OA building. Uh, the county already owns most of this grid, uh, we've acquired that over time. Uh, you know, the original intent of the first bond election was to acquire with the bond post to the OA building, that become the courthouse structure, and then this, which is going down and become parking. Uh, again, we have parking over here, uh, that creates more parking than we have currently today, we still have the city paying for your spots around, uh, but, uh, you know, still not the adequate or, you know, ideal number of parking spaces, but obviously, a lot more parking than what we originally have or currently have. So, this facility needs to go away to become our parking, to accommodate the new courthouse here. Uh, it was during that time, like, like Eddie said, um, we started getting wind of city here, or the downtown Odessa groups, the overall plan, uh, in fact, that's where I, where I first thought, was on a sketch or a drawing of the downtown area, and our courthouse with a park, and I said, wait a minute, that's where our parking is. And so, uh, so that's where, I picked it one time, and the mayor and I talked, and, uh, we talked about, you know, obviously, that parking for us, as long as we have suitable parking that's adjacent to our building, we could be fine. Um, the OA was subsequently bought by the city when that bond issue failed, I'm assuming that it includes the vacant lot across Catty Corner that the OA currently owns. So, that should become parking, ground parking as well, uh, with or without this being acquired, but, uh, I don't know how many of the phases that, that would take up. Uh, so that's kind of the diagram. Again, two, two sides of the same coin, uh, you know, the, the city's, they have to do certain things and help us up the structures, uh, you know, a very clean way to do that is just to get an equation with the courthouse, and the county can sell the courthouse to the city to become a park. Uh, and then we use those funds to, to complete our process. Um, I mean, that's the cleanest mechanism, that's, uh, getting an outside opinion of a value and that becomes...
If you can sell it.
That's true. But, uh, so, you know, so there are other ways to do it as opposed to just feeling like we're coming to the city for, for handouts. Uh, all of us, I think, benefit from a revitalized downtown. That's no, that's no secret. Um, the biggest concern I have with all the discussions is, we, we still have to remember that the courthouse is owned by the citizens of Ex County. It's not, it's not a group of elected officials or even the employees in the building that own that. And so, when that public has already said ninety-five million was too expensive, I think it becomes our job to find a way to make that more affordable for the public, not, how do we grow it and build it and get what we want out of it? Um, and I guess, you know, I, I've gone back and forth, you know, Odessa College built four buildings for sixty-five million dollars. Large buildings that are more square footage than what we're talking about. And we're talking about one building for ninety-five to a hundred and ten million. And so, at some point, we've gotta decide, what do we have to have in a courthouse? Uh, I, I would think that our current employees at the courthouse right now, if we said, can you get by with a smaller facility today that's brand new, or do you want us to wait three more years to get one that we can afford that's big enough to grow into twenty years from now? Most of them are gonna say, we want something today that we can do our job in today. Uh, so I understand the need of trying to plan for the future, make sure we have, uh, space to grow into, but, I mean, it, it comes down to the point where, I mean, if you're already talking fifty percent more space currently than what we are operating at today, I think trying to come up with a way to increase that with an increased price tag is gonna be a lot harder still. And what I'd be afraid of is almost an antagonistic view by the public that they do wanna challenge our debt issuance. If you don't come back with something that looks like you listened to them the first time.
Well, listen to what Greg says.
Here's a, here's a possible compromise, we could trade the property. And that would be, still going to need a lot of demolition, for getting a park, let's do a park in there, strip it off. You lose the park, but then you don't have to buy a lot of extra land over here. Then the county could stay with demolition, et cetera, for the properties that are done. You can acquire the last property, or y'all could acquire, you know. But that's a possible tweak that would lower the cost of the deal. Which, say, you just have parking here beneath the knees, you don't have to buy this, buy this one lot here, and do the swap still. Put the courthouse right here, parking right there. And the courthouse arc, you know, where you could, you know, twinkle the entrance to the courthouse where you can figure out if it's more convenient for parking over here to access the courthouse.
Do we have anybody that can give us a price fair and, and...
Let me go over my stuff real quick.
That's your only place there?
Yes.
Have we, um, ever considered maybe approaching one of these oil and gas companies, seeing if they're interested in showing Odessa their commitment? And it's very, I mean, it's no big secret, I mean, our properties are feeling very good to this, you know? Out of the box thinking, and it's, it's innovative thinking. I think the problem you get into when you're, when you deal with something like a courthouse is the, um, concept of whether or not, I mean, it's obviously not like a ballpark, you know, where you can put name-made ballpark. I don't think you could sell naming rights to the courthouse, nor do I think you'd want to do that. Because I think the courthouse ought to have the, not only the appearance, but also the function of neutral. We're all equal in the eyes of the law, and, um, that to me would create kind of a, maybe someone's starting off a little bit ahead.
Maybe for the park.
Maybe for the park?
Yeah. Okay, well, I just... But if you give up the park, then we don't have to mess with the land.
Well, and I personally thank county commissioners for the, um, welcome. Um, I agree with Judge Eckert on legislatively, we don't know what's going to happen. Um, you know, I don't think the best forensics teller in the world can tell what's going to happen in Austin the next round. Um, and that does concern me, and we've heard a lot of revenue caps, we've talked, you know, we've seen what they've done to the schools, pushing it all down to the local level. Um, you know, I, I think we have to work together. Very proud of this council, uh, working with D C P D, working with Odessa College, doing what's can with, uh, E C I S D. And I appreciate the county commissioners bringing us here and let's sit down and talk about it. Um, as far as the courthouse building itself, the most underappreciated people in Ector County are the maintenance staff of that building. What they do, much miracles, with Plato. I mean, you've got a building that's falling down. Last time I served on jury duty, went in the jury room, you could look at that floor, and the floor goes like this. But, you know, as a juror, please go sit right over there in that chair, and all I keep thinking is sinkhole. Uh, one of my concerns, and I'll just be honest, I would like to iron out some of the costs. Um, you know, we've got building over there, um, in that area right there, not right there. Kind of isolate what the cost, or get a ballpark cost of acquisition, uh, in some of that area. I understand one of the entities has already bought into the building. Uh, yeah, they have bought into the building, uh, on Andrews Highway, I believe.
Just so the public knows, would you like me to go over there?
Just over there.
You didn't take any work?
Yeah.
This, um, what we're talking about here, this is Cloverhouse.
Pretty poor job.
This is Cloverhouse here, okay.
Anybody can't see, over there.
We're moving on. We're moving on.
That's my loss.
This is going to be Steve Brandon. Um, this is going to be, um, funny Henderson, uh, this stuff, which is Mike Henderson.
He has that and he has this.
And he has that. And then Cloverhouse, this is kind of checkerboard through here, where I believe you've got, uh, Mike Henderson, then you have Cloverhouse, then you have Henderson again. So those are the landowners that, that have this property that would have to be acquired if the city wanted to keep the park there. If the city does not keep the park, you could put the parking there and forget here.
What I'm saying is, if you get an idea of the demo cost for this, uh, I know we're spending over two hundred thousand dollars on the assessment from Scott Young. Yeah, about four hundred thousand for the assessment demolition. Uh, in Scott Young. We know this is going to be a concern, um, just get, I understand we can't get hard numbers, but at least get ballpark, so we feel comfortable with. I know with demolition on these buildings, uh, and get some idea, um, and then come back together and kind of sound that. Uncertainty concerns me on things like this. As a business person, you know, I would love to have, you know, um, a certainty, just to say, we feel comfortable in saying a demo of this building would be X. I understand there are going to be things you don't find until you're demoing, uh, but we at least have a good idea. Talk to those landowners, say, okay, what do you think?
And I met with two of the landowners this morning. I met with Steve Brandon, I also met with Mike Henderson. Just to ask him, you know, first of all, we have to, even before we get to the cost thing, see if there is any interest in something. And so, I, I have met with them, and they know and understand that we're going to be asking them, um, for a purchase price for their properties. And, um, you know, at least see if that's, I, I knew you would probably want this cost information, so that's why I did that. I've not heard from Cloverhouse.
Yeah, just get a, I have, I understand Cloverhouse purchased the building, it's on Andrews Highway, so I'm assuming there's going to be movement in the building. But just to come up with a little bit more, uh, more in facts, and then, you know, I'd even say, hey, just go out three weeks and meet him, and have some firmer numbers, and how to go from there. But that's, you know, I want to thank y'all for your hospitality, and I appreciate the fact that we're working together. Because honestly, it doesn't need to be the city and county and schools and all that, we all need to work together.
I feel like we need to put a committee together to, to evaluate and research the, the joint venture. I mean, the city has needs to, um, but part of that's going to be, we'll put all this together, we'll see, we'll see, uh, the benefits of a joint venture. I mean, we'll, we'll explore all of these so that we're not just addressing the one need that's, that's very obvious and apparent, but the future needs that are facing our community.
I agree.
I want to interject something there. Because I, I know the city doesn't have a plan, and I don't think the county has a plan. And I think until you get a committee together, I think the city needs to get together, and we've got a lot of things that we need and have to do as a city. I don't want to say, oh, yeah, we're going to do this, and then find out that, no, we can't do that much. So, I think we need to do our homework, and we all need to do your homework, and then maybe we can come back together for another meeting. That's just our feeling.
You don't think a, a joint committee would, would take care of that?
Nope, I really don't. I think we need to decide as a city, like, we've got a lot of issues, a lot of things that we need to do frankly. And frankly, I don't want two people to decide that, or I think our, our council needs to.
Yeah, we're, we're just gathering, and to take, take back to each entity. Uh, so, so the information that this committee gathered will feed to the commissioners' court and to the city council, and it'll give the, the funding, the, the needs, the dollars amounts, the, um, all the possibilities and stuff like that. So, we won't have any kind of decision-making ability, it's just fact time. And I would say today, it's just an informational item on the notice of we would have to meet again to appoint the committee. We can discuss it today, we can talk about the committee, but we can't make any decisions on the committee today. Um, with respect back to agenda item one that we both discussed. I think we've gone over, but I just want to kind of look through here and see if there's some things that we haven't, we haven't addressed. But probably ought to take some public comment with respect to agenda item one, if people have, um, some things that they would like to say. Um, I think everybody knows the county's general financial challenges, I think that's addressed.
Yeah, we have one that likes to...
Yeah.
Have any of the legal counsel looked at the provision on the courthouse?
That's something else I think we need to learn.
I, I gave... That needs to be deposhed by Mr. Stone.
That's a good idea.
I gave that to the city attorney, to our city attorney to look at, but I forgot it from you. But I had not received any information on it. I think it was, well, wait, and probably spend a time examining it now and wait until the issue comes up. So, yeah, it does need to be looked at.
But that's something the committee could do, just to, because, I mean, you need to have...
I, I thought we'd already addressed that with our, for our two groups, but I was under the impression, the restriction just said it has to be for public use. That which a park could be public use.
I thought part of it that, I actually, I thought I remember somebody saying, well, it had to remain with the county, given to the county. And we said, well, we could always do a, a lease, or...
Yeah, we'll, we'll maintain the car too.
But, uh, yeah, I think that's, but that's something that could be addressed. Judge, you want to let this go?
Yeah, yeah. We have two, two completed forms, looks like. Um, Elaine Gollaher would like to speak regarding the courthouse.
Can you tell that name?
Uh, yes, Elaine, E L A I N E, Gollaher, G O L L A H E R. Yes, and you can come up, if they can't, so they can...
How about that?
They have a poem, you know, when you get recorded.
Yeah. You can pull it down.
Hi, thank you, I am the council, I'm a council member, commissioner of the court, I think I worked for her. I don't know how many minutes, but I'll, I'll bet you it's short, because they know everybody's time is valuable. I, um, I was on the, uh, floor, I did, uh, a simple concern, um, homeowner. And, um, I saw the planning, I saw the, um, the security there, I also saw the additional, um, security assets for the charging. And, um, I have a few questions concerning this, um, current one right here. Um, in the O A buildings, are y'all concerned, are y'all going to be concerned with the planning? Are you aware of buildings for the courthouse? Are you concerned with the, um, the whole city planning?
Are you referring to this building that's here?
Yeah, uh, I don't know.
That's the Odessa Americans currently?
Mm-hmm.
That building will be removed completely to the ground?
To the ground.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And we, we started, uh, we've seen several studies, the public has several studies, and each of these studies, um, each of these studies, um, cost money. Uh, as far as doing bring somebody in, you have to serve something, you get a, a bid, and, uh, you ask it, can you sign for it or not? And, um, my concern is, my concern is this, y'all, you see the plan of the coast Cloverhouse, and, um, they might be willing, they might be willing to sell, we don't know. But I am concerned about the general, the general public also, this courthouse needs to be a courthouse for all the people. All the people, and there are people out there who, I'm just listening today, thinking I'm going to pay their own property taxes. I know there's these people that, that they cannot afford to pay the property taxes, what they have to do is they have to pay fifteen to a hundred dollar tax. So they could use for a purchase or something else, and they have to set that off to pay the property taxes. I'm thinking about this, to grow, and grow these population of workers that is growing, um, these people living in what we call corporate offices. And we have people that go around, and yes, they're trying to come up, and, um, someone will end up in jail because they don't have the required stuff to go. They're going to do time just to have somewhere to eat, or to sleep, somewhere for, somewhere for money. That is what I'm like a parent. Do this, we need economical housing for cities. We need economical houses for, um, without, without tuition fees, without given loans. And, um, we need, um, economical housing. And I think what's in the city in the state here, maybe something like twenty-eight hundred, um, per month just for housing, that's for your electricity. I'm concerned for all the people, not just those who make lots of money. I'm also concerned that, um, that we do not overreach here. Um, if then, um, how big, or at least if my, if I think it's a red, right, and it could be a middle, say, uh, money for their courthouse. I think I could be wrong this way, but I'm, my major concern is that if the bond has to give, the bond taxes, then if the bond must be insured, that it is, that the, that the council, the city is not able to go back in there and up the credit. If they do that, and try, but they need more money. So, I'm looking at, I'm looking at a homeless that I deal every day. I'm looking at veterans that walk their dogs in their free under-sung, under-sung beans, just to, just to get by the night, depending on other people's, um, resources. I mean, shelters are full, they'll pass, and we don't have enough shelters out there, and we need more shelters. So, that is not only known, as my loyal sages you describe, we need more shelters out there for people. I'm concerned for we, the people, it's in the constitution, constitution, we, the people. And we, the people, including, for anybody who wants to admit it or not, we, the people, including, those people that have lost their home. And what, not their fault that they lost their home, shall be for now. I am concerned for, uh, the young, and, um, as then it comes to mind, there's lots of people down there, there are children. And we need a little labor, though, if you don't have some children, to be able to give their children without having to go to the front, of holding a lot of, um, debt. And for an elderly person, my aunt, let's say, is nine years old. She has, they have to run a self-serve, go to the courthouse, uh, she can still go ride her bike. And, uh, she can walk, but she can be running with it. But, um, these are the people, we need to think of, we need to think about, we need to think about people who need to learn the truth. We need to not be spoiled up, like they say. We, the people, we need to plan, and all the, we, the people. And I took, um, most of the time, but I like to take mine on the favor of the constitution, and the legal constitution, and the statute of rights. Uh, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Allen, I appreciate that. And, uh, we'll move on to, looks like another, another subject, so, you know, another subject.
Now, before we get off this first, I'd like to, if I may, reiterate, uh, what Commissioner Sheldon was saying is that, I, I, in my mind, we really need to do the best and fastest way of collecting information to make a decision. It's so hard to get two governmental agencies together, and, and with that in mind, I think a gathering committee, I'm not saying I want to be on it, I'm just saying that I think that's the best and fastest way, the best and fastest way to at least get things to, in order for us to make a decision, or at least get the facts to at least come, uh, somewhat be able to come to that conclusion. I think that's so important. I think we are faced, you know, Odessa, Texas, with such a, a, uh, doing, we're looking at things during good times. And we need to be looking at things all the time. And we have such a different community because of our, of our, of our economics ups and downs, that, uh, uh, I hate to lose time. And I think that time is of the utmost importance if it's, that we can at least get some information to make a decision.
Yeah, you know, so far as timing, and for the next meeting, you know, to actually have, you know, first of all, before we get to future meetings, you know, do, does anybody have any other input or thoughts that they might want to express regarding any of the issues in the agenda notices?
Again, Judge, I mean, I know you, and I was, I know you said that you didn't agree, but I would have to respectfully disagree with you and say that. I think it's imperative that we might want to consider approaching the oil and gas company. Um, we could dedicate a park, we could dedicate a statue, we could dedicate a plaque, or whatever is the we need to do to invite them to, to do, I guess, as you can call it, this one favor. Because you guys need this now, to leave, I mean, like you said, it's, it's imperative, and time is of the essence. Um, we don't know where our economy is going from one day to the next. One day we're booming, next they were bucked. So, instead of having to dip into the taxpayers' pockets, then let's, I think we should consider approaching an oil and gas company. You, you, I mean, you never know, there could be one right now who's willing to do this.
We'd have to, of course, you know, consult with legal counsel and make sure that whatever is suggested is, is legal and appropriate. is, is legal and appropriate, that, you know, there are all sorts of ideas that could possibly exist. Um, you know, we've seen examples, I think, in other jurisdictions where you'll go and you'll have a parking garage for something, for instance, where you'll have a certain fee that you have to pay, you know, for a certain amount of hours, you know, maybe that could be, um, an out-of-the-box way of, uh, sharing revenues toward a common venture, joint venture, or something of that nature. But, you know, again, that may or may not be necessary, depending upon the parking option which is chosen, you know. And so, um, but I, any innovative thinking, that's why I made, probably I made this an open meeting to the public as well. Because we never know where a great idea will come from. It may not come from us at all, it may come from someone out there. And, um, so that's why we noticed this publicly. I do agree that, you know, with the, what may be in the offing in the next legislature, you know, um, we've got to, got to move quickly, because we don't know what's going to happen there. It may affect our local control, it may affect our local ability to take care of our own, uh, problems. And we might not be able to take care of our own problems with as much latitude and freedom as we want to have.
Why don't we, uh, council will get together, discuss it, twenty-two people. Let Mr. Stan, and then let him be some of the work.
Could we, could we do this too? I want to call agenda item two, and then we'll talk about scheduling the next meeting. And, you know, the next meeting, we might actually, um, could have action items on that next meeting. But agenda item two is to discuss deliberative, taking any necessary actions to schedule an additional joint meeting of the Odessa City Council and the Entra County Commissioners Court to discuss and follow up on any item referenced in the preceding agenda item and incorporated herein by reference subject to and contingent upon the city's and county's compliance with and adherence to the applicable posting and publication requirements for the future meeting as imposed by Texas law. And, uh, again, time being of the essence, um, yeah, I think we ought to probably schedule this pretty quickly, following up on the momentum of this. I know the commissioners, um, have a, uh, conference, I think, in a couple of weeks in Frisco, so that, that's out. Um, next week might be available, same back time, same channel. If, uh, if that's too soon, then, you know, we could look at, you know, moving it out a little ways, and, um...
I hope so, probably the best is to let Norma talk to council, and then we can work like we did with this meeting. Because we don't know who's coming on. Kids are graduating and things like that, at least, look at calendars of each individual, and then y'all do the same thing.
Do y'all meet Monday, or did you meet yesterday?
We met yesterday, we meet, you know. So, and again, that's part of the challenge here also, because we have two different entities, that's always, just getting agreement, but one is sometimes fun. But then we add two, and then you have two different scheduling formats, because we're on the second, for Monday, we'll take y'all on the second and for Tuesday.
Does it have to follow the way the meeting's given?
No, we, just like this, where we, we put this meeting right here, so, you know, um...
Norma can get all that information fairly quickly, if you look at calendars. It'd start next week, which is that, is that what you're talking about?
Start looking at...
Could we just ask right now, is there anyone that could not meet next Tuesday?
I just don't know if we can get the information that fast.
We're here.
But, no, no, no.
To form the committees, it's not...
No, that, that you, we have to need to, to, uh...
Yeah, we're not going to have any information, we need to gather to assign task, to develop information.
Can't be, each entity assign just two people, and that solves the problem by the committee, and then they can start working on the information.
Yeah, I bet the city, I bet the city has two volunteers right now. We got Malcolm, who's in the fifth district, and we got...
Haha, haha. What we're doing, we're crossing the threshold of discussion. Yeah, we can't, I have an account, do that.
No, I said, I bet we got two volunteers.
But that's why we have another meeting after, probably, we... If we did it, sign the committee, and then we could do an action item to, you know, to go along with that, you know, as long as we have them.
Do we have a planning committee meeting, do you think?
Yeah.
It needs like thirty minutes before, so we can discuss. Or, for us, I mean, we can discuss who, 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 who's concerned on there.
But there's another, after the meeting, let's call it on the same time next week, which would be another one-thirty meeting. So it, you know, this may not happen overnight, you know, and it, there'll be a series, like I said, I've visioned this as a series, as the opening dialogue to a series of meetings.
I'll take this out next week, and I'll start, yeah. Should be one, one agenda item, and take phrase, four time, go from there.
One-thirty next, two. Yeah. One-thirty next Tuesday, you go here, or you go to there?
We can do it. Y'all have a...
And if you've got any...
You would have to bring, you know, you know, you have to bring them. Mm, snacks. Malcolm, I'm picturing, welcome to the Act of Twenty-Fourth House, party provided by Apache Orleans. That's fine.
Well, the words are, there are no, there are no crazy ideas here. They're, they're just ideas, and we have to have them all vetted through council.
All right. I welcome the brainstorming. Um, next Tuesday, the seventeenth, then at one-thirty, again, that'll require the, um, notices being issued according to the law to the public. Just they'll have them, kind of, so they can to, to be here. So, what's happening? Are you going to post that openly enough, that if we do have any new numbers, or, as I would assume? I don't, I don't know, anything I can put in ideas that stimulation costs on certain issues or something.
What's new, you got any figures at all right now?
We can always have it there when we can review, discuss, and, you know, uh, these things as they come up. We'll, we'll work on that, but I think...
I'll prepare items that, that would have to be ratified, so I'd like to have it on there. And have to wait another two weeks before we got a meeting, so if there's something there that we can move the needle forward, I'd like to have it on there, because...
And I'll, and I'll be working, you know, with, with Norma and with the folks to get the agenda items, notice, okay?
Just use our shorter version, that you can go on a...
This time, you know, paraphrase.
You want us to do that?
Um, we got that.
Yes, yes, that's what we're getting, putting ready to.
Oh, oh.
Um, we'll just have him move his microphone. We have one more citizen that needs to speak.
Oh, okay, now, another citizen, yeah, we had another citizen that needed to speak. Teresa Waters.
I'd like to congratulate you, uh, meeting both county and city.
Amen, I appreciate that too, but would you mind just speaking into that microphone, just so I can record this? Uh, we have to do it first.
That's okay, can you hear me now?
Yes, I can, yeah.
Okay, uh, I, I appreciate that y'all are gathering, because we are the citizens of Odessa and Entra County. I live here, I have been working, uh, for a long time on renovation of downtown Odessa. And I speak also for a lot of people who, who can't speak for themselves. Um, I, I, I agree with the, the county, um, maybe making a new courthouse, but I also think that, uh, we need to consider geography. You know, the, the, the county courthouse now is on top of us deals. And we need to consider if, if less, perhaps, how we did the five hundred years, less, so if it's down lower than anywhere it's at now, uh, we need to consider that. I agree, whatever you want to do, uh, call the obvious, um, high-rise, party is fine. Y'all need to think about the citizens, like this other lady said, there are people who are concerned with, um, with taxes. I agree with that. But we also need to think, what is the best interest of the, of the citizens of this county and city? And this is so great, that y'all are feeding together and trying to resolve the problem. I have been working with the, uh, citizens of Entra County and Odessa to try to get water for any of these spaces, uh, that didn't have water. I've worked with, uh, the citizens of Olande, of Entra, we made a petition, they got water, but no sewer. Uh, I worked with, uh, the, uh, people at Jonesville to get water, because their water was contaminated by oil fields, um, um, oil wells, and they, they, they hardly got some water, they... The Westside of Odessa, they completely got flooded with water, hopefully. Some of the citizens are still waiting for clear areas, the property still has some infrastructure over there. Now, right now, I'm calling the city of Odessa and the county to cooperate on the, uh, chico they listed. Uh, about twenty years ago, came and requested water, uh, that they, I think the county only gave us sewer. Which, you know, they're good, but then we've been coming and requesting, uh, other time to come and do the city water. Now, the, and the chico's food is completely surrounded by the city. You are having a construction build at the eighty-seventh and Dawn, the new housing project. You have equipment there, um, and you also possibly, uh, just leap across the, you know, that one alleyway and give the, and the chico water services. They could give also streets, um, over there, so that they can have access to streets, uh, there. It would improve the, the living spaces for the people who live there. And this is what I, I think, it's not going to be a source of value, people, um, living abilities can, can be raised there. And thank you so much for this very, now, both of you, thanks.
Thanks, thank you, sir.
Judge, if, if I can put you on the spot, I, I, I want to say something that, when you went and made a plea, and I saw that feeling, you went to the municipal, and, and, and you talked about constitutional, you know, and like how this is a responsibility, and, and I don't know if you have it, or, or, I didn't see you reading anything, but I think you gave the public a little bit of, of what you talked about there, because it really motivated me, uh, because it made me look at it at a different perspective. Uh, so, I don't know if that's something that you could do, or...
You know, what you're talking about, obviously, is something that we all care deeply about. We've had so many, uh, many people who've given their lives for our constitution, for our, our concept of freedom, things that we believe in. Make sure that people are innocent until proven guilty in the court of law. Prove that, um, we have juries that hear cases and decide outcomes and fates. That our very fabric of living in the United States is dependent upon and contingent upon the ongoing rule of law. And the ability and the concept that it's law before man, and that we all follow due process of the law. For any of that to happen, there has to be a home for justice. There has to be a house for justice, a place where these cases can get tried. So that day, on a daily basis, we're testing out that constitution. Judges are trying cases, lawyers are prosecuting cases, defense lawyers are defending those cases. And it's really amazing how that process happens every day. But it all depends upon a huge assumption. The assumption underlying all of it is that you have a place where that constitution is going to be tested. You have a place where the courts can be open. And you have a place where people can feel free to come and testify, and not be scared they're going to get mauled on the way to the courthouse where they're supposed to testify. You know, we have prisoners that are walking with our citizens up there. And we're not talking about those awaiting trial, sometimes we're talking about even those who've been convicted. It's not a great atmosphere. And it's certainly not consistent with that American flag up there. And I, for one, uh, the reason I decided to, to make the plea is because I believe in that so much. And because I think it underlies the oath that I take as an attorney. It underlies the oath that we all take implied of that we are going to follow the law, and we're going to follow the constitution. We can't do nothing anymore. There have been attempts that have been made to rectify the situation in times past. Those were rejected. We're trying to come up with solutions that will work, recognizing the reason why we do it, and the importance and value of why we do it. It could be you, it could be me next time, who knows, who might need a courtroom. Um, and it's just, I'm probably not the best spokesperson for this. Probably Bobby Bland would be, or Jess Billingsley, or Dusty Galavan. Um, people who speak better than I do. But they know what I'm talking about. They could all come up here and talk about it, because they believe it, that's where they work. And sometimes my biggest sympathy, as I look at this, is the clerks in our county clerk's office. And I don't know how many times I've gone down there, it's been a few, where we see a new leak or a new ceiling tile where the leak has spread to here. Or it might be a gas smell on one particular day. Or it might be that horrible situation I hope none of you ever find yourselves in, where you smell fire, you don't know where it's coming from, and there's hundreds of people in the courthouse whose lives may be in jeopardy. And you gotta make a, a quick call of what's going to happen. It's totally unacceptable. I think that we can do better as a town and as a county. The, the great thing to come out of this that I see is cooperation. And what better place to start cooperating than the courthouse, the very fabric of our justice system? And I think if it's successful here, then this dialogue could expand in the future.
Amen. Now, go ahead and ask for a motion to close, City Council? You say? All in favor, please say aye. Aye. All opposed? City Council adjourned. Currently, two fifty-nine, you know, there being no further, um, justice, the Entra County Commissioners Court, I would ask for a motion to adjourn. Go ahead. Um, all in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed, please say aye. Aye.